Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form. They're available near the front door. And present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council. City Council as the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority, regular meeting for July 9th, 2019. Tonight, we're honored to have Pastor Patrick Bowler of the Brook Church to lead our invocation. And immediately following that, will be our city attorney, Adrian Gura, who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing.
As I grow older and grayer and whiter with my hair, the more I ask God for wisdom. The Bible says there's much help, much help in many counselors. And so, any kind of task that you need to do, we need to ask God, because it really helps. Most power of hearts. Father, we thank you. You truly do grant wisdom to those who ask. And I beg you, Father, to put your wisdom, your understanding, upon these folks that are here tonight, upon the City Council, upon those who wish to speak. And I pray you would have your way. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And I'll mention at this time, tonight, we will be closing in memory of the voice of Grand Terrace Radio 1640. Pete Parsons has left the building. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We don't have any special presentations tonight, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted on at one time by City Council without any discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items at this time?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove number three.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. I will get right back to you. I have Councilmember Allen first.
Item six, please, Mayor.
Item six, and Councilmember Hussey?
Number three.
Number three. Okay, so we will pull item three and item six. Do I have a motion for the balance?
I move.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Allen for items one, two, four, five, and seven on the consent calendar. Second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Allen, attachment to the minutes.
Yeah, I'd like, yes, thanks, Mayor. On packet page one, thirty-four, under item six, there is, it's item number twelve, drainage I'd like to know what the status of that is, please. And also, over on item, same item, I mean, packet page one forty-two.
Okay, can you, can you repeat the first packet page number?
Packet page one thirty-four. Item twelve, drainage issues. This is item six, correct?
Yes.
Yes, item six, that's correct. But on the page itself, it's, it'd been listed as number twelve. Packet page one thirty-four. And it's a letter from a resident about drainage, drainage issues into their yard. My question about that is, is this a water company issue or a city issue?
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Councilmember Allen, Gerald Duffy for the record. This item is a city issue, and we did dispatch our staff to look at this particular issue. The Public Works Director did address this issue with the customer.
Okay, great, thank you. The only other, for the same item six, if we flip over to packet page one forty-two, and this is in reference to lifted sidewalks. So, on one forty-two, that would be numbers sixty-seven and seventy-two residents in May sent letters in, to messages into the city about broken sidewalks and risks. I know that we have some, that they are a risk for our city and a liability to us, and I'd like to know if they're being addressed in a timely manner. Because I don't see on here anything that says they've been addressed or looked at. Thank you.
Mr. French?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Allen French, Public Works Director, for the record. On the sidewalk issues, these are notifications that we get. We send out staff within twenty-four hours to look at the issue, to see what it is. There are different issues that we can address immediately, but we will always mark the sidewalks so they know that we've been out there. These issues, when we can deal with them right away, we'll get to them within the week if they are a certain amount of discrepancy in the sidewalk. It's usually, you know, a differential settlement issue, so we address those when we can. If there are substantial issues, we add it to a list that we put out for a contractor to address. So, these items, we've either taken care of the grinding of the sidewalk within the week, or we've added it to the list for the contractor, and we'll put out the bid, as soon as we get enough of them, we put out for bid, and get those addressed as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. French, thank you very much. I'd just like to ask you, do you, when you talk about marking them, if you can't get to them right away, are you talking about actually marking the broken section itself with some sort of high-visibility paint to warn an oncoming pedestrian?
We usually add the paint or marking on it, just not, not really only for the visibility, but so that we know this is the area, so that when we send somebody out to fix it, they know which area we're talking about.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Item number three.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item number three, packet page eighteen. You know, I know the, and it's going to be number three on the top part, the revenue reductions. I know the city staff worked hard, and we passed the budget, but it just, something bothers me about, you know, we're not getting any receipts from the senior center, any anticipating funds, and we have in the past. I was wondering if we could get some kind of a audit to see why, you know, because the senior center is full, and I believe there's a waiting list, but there's something, I don't know, it just doesn't, you know, we're going by their word, and I would like to see, you know, the, something coming in to subsidize for the busing and the staff that we have on there. I don't want to fall into the same type of daycare situation, but that was just a question. There's got to be something, it just stands out that we had sixty thousand, and we don't anticipate any other funds coming in, and how much repairs are being done on the senior center. So, that was just a question I had, and I forgot to ask it last week.
Okay, so are you asking if we've looked at?
If we could get.
No, are you asking if we've looked at it, or are you asking if they can go do an audit? Because those are two different things.
Okay, I'm asking if they could do an audit on it.
Okay. Shouldn't that come back to us as a suggestion for a, an item? Because I would believe that that would be more than an hour's worth of staff time, Mr. Duffy.
Yes, Mayor, but what would happen is, there is an annual audit already, and what we can do is, we can simply ask them to justify the cost. Because Councilman Hussey is correct, the center is full, but one of the things that they do is, they have these different maintenance accounts, and so if the maintenance exceeds where they normally would have, they would then not have extra revenue to share with the city. So, we can certainly ask for, to review the audit and come back with a report to the council.
And if it needed to be, I'll send in a request, too, for it, so.
Well, if we already do an audit, or an audit's already done, and it's just, and it's just requesting to review it.
Yes, and we should review it anyway, so we can provide you with a real quick report.
Okay, so that sounds like it's taken care of already. Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. All right, so I have an item three and an item six. Is there a motion to approve those?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve items three and item six of the consent calendar.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen for items three and six. Motion by Councilmember Hussey, or second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. So, we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. There also might be a brief response requested from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or an item may be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have any requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
After, after I've read all the parameters, all right, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to councilmembers for their reports. We'll begin with Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this time to thank the staff of our city, and also our Assembly Member, Reyes, for the extraordinary effort they put in, especially the Assembly Member in getting us the grant for our Blue Mountain Park, and for the playground equipment for accessible, the accessible playground equipment for the children. I just, I really, personally, and on behalf of the city, thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
I concur. I'd just like to thank the Assembly Member and their staff, and our city staff, for working hard to get that grant, and especially the accessible handicap equipment. It's going to be really, you know, great for some of the families that have their kids out there. And I talked to one of the mother, and told her that lie at the end of the tunnel is coming for that. But I'd just like to thank everybody who did all that work, and hopefully everybody had a great Fourth of July, and God bless, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I don't have a report, but I also would like to publicly thank Assembly Member Reyes for all her efforts on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Real quick, thank you, Mayor. We were at the Sixty-Sixers game when the seven point one hit, and I don't know if it was actually related to an activity that happened shortly before that, where the president of the SBCTA threw out the first ball. But I do know that concrete does have a tendency to warble, and it was the weirdest thing to be sitting there in the stands and feel everything, you know, act like an ocean, and then all, then go side to side. So, it shouldn't fail me to, to mention that earthquake preparedness is a very important topic. It's all over the place. You can find the information, and Red Cross has a lot of information. But in addition to that, I would suggest that you get your foodstuffs squared away. There's a, there are a lot of services like that, and you can put them in your closet and at least have a week's worth of food material. It points out the immediacy of, of what happens when, all of a sudden, you've got a huge seismic activity, and is it feasibly possible for, you know, the emergency responders to run around and hold your hand? No, it's not. It better not be.
It's not their job.
So, in the long run, you know, they're, they're going to be handling, you know, lots of stuff for the masses, and rightfully so, and we greatly appreciate their efforts. We have to take care of ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was at that game. I kind of thought that because the Sixty-Sixers were playing the quakes, that perhaps the quakes, quakes were playing a joke, but didn't turn out to be that way. I, too, will thank the Assembly Member, Eloise Reyes, for the one point three million that she was able to bring to Grand Terrace. It will be of good use for our accessible playground material, or equipment, and I look forward to us being able to finally do the Blue Mountain Trail that so many people have been waiting for. I wanted to read a little bit about Pete Parsons, or Peter Dustin Parsons, as he was known, but I knew him as Pete. He retired, as he put it, from the radio wars. He was a program director at a number of stations, as well as an on-air personality. He worked during the time that, when he did the news, he had to get the AP wire feed and write his own news, not forecast, but he had to, he had to take what others wrote and then make it something that was his own, and he was very, very good at it. So, he did, he calls his real jobs. He worked for KFWB in Hollywood, Los Angeles, KC, Casey in San Bernardino, KOKU in Guam, KMEN in San Bernardino, KPSI in Palm Springs, KHJ in Hemet, and several others, KCIN Victorville, KHNY in Riverside, and the original KPAS Banning. So, he, as I said, he was not only on the air, but he was a program director at some of those. And we had the benefit of that, because when he retired, he decided that he wanted to serve his community through his help with our Emergency Operations Center radio station. And so, he brought his knowledge of the radio field and program direction, and he actually wrote and did voice spots for our radio. In fact, he's probably, his voice is probably still on there right now. So, he was also an editor for a short time of the Grand Terrace City News. Prior to all of that, he served four years with the Army Security Agency from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-seven in the Philippines, Vietnam, Thailand, and just outside of Washington, DC. And so, I want to finish, I want, he posted his favorite quotes, and so, this really embodies who he is. "If it ain't broke, don't fix it. No matter where you go, there you are." "I wonder what this little wire does." "A lack of planning on your part does not necessarily constitute an emergency on my And for the true copywriter that he was, there is no stronger urge for a person other than to change another's written copy. And with that, I remember Pete Parsons. So, we'll move on to our public hearings, of which we have two tonight. So, for both of our public hearings, if you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request-to-speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the City Council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And so, for both of our public hearings tonight, we will follow this format. We will ask for a staff report. We will open the public hearing. We will ask for any written communication. City Council will ask questions of staff at that time. The applicant's comments, if we do have an applicant, will come after that, and they are not limited to three minutes. If there are those in the public who wish to speak in favor or opposition, they will come next, and they will be limited to three minutes. The applicant will have an opportunity to rebut anything that is brought up during that public comment. The public hearing will be closed, and then the council will begin their deliberations. So, we will start first tonight with the Hearing of Appeals of Delinquent Refuse, Sewer and Rental Inspection Fees, Adoption of Resolutions to Collect Said Delinquent Fees on the Tax Roll, and for the Placement of Assessments for Said Delinquent Fees on Properties Located in the City. Approval of Agreement with the County for Collection of Fees and Assessment in Taxes in Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Mr. Public Works Director, Allen French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. This report tonight will be given by Management Analyst Todd Nagasaki.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council. Todd Nagasaki, Management Analyst, Public Works Department. The item here before you is for a public hearing for the placement of assessment liens on properties with delinquent refuse, sewer, and rental inspection fee accounts. The staff reports supports the 2030 Vision Goal, number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. This is reflected in our municipal code in chapters five point four-two, thirteen point zero-eight, and five point eight-zero for refuse, sewer, and the rental property program. So, refuse and sewer fees are assessed through our partnership with BRTech and the City of Colton. BRTech oversees the program for refuse collection, and the City of Colton oversees the program for sewer collection. The City of Grand Terrace oversees the program for rental property, which requires payment of annual inspection fees by owners of rental properties, and is headed by Director of Planning and Development, Sandra Molina. The delinquent account list timeline, shown on the slide here, indicates that on June third, our first notice was sent to a residence with the assistance of BRTech and, and the City of Colton via certified mail. A revised list was attached to the council meeting agenda for today, reflecting delinquent accounts where payment had not been received as of June twenty-seventh. That list was later revised and included in your council packets tonight, and that reflects payments not received as of July second. This list will be submitted as a preliminary list of special assessments to the county. A quick breakdown of the numbers, between the time of the first notice and the report that's in your packet today, a total of, the city has received payment for fifty-five residential refuse and sewer accounts, eight, sorry, two commercial sewer accounts, and ten rental properties, bringing the total number of outstanding delinquent accounts to two hundred and fifteen for residential refuse and sewer, eight for commercial sewer, and thirty-six for rental property inspections. Pending the public hearing tonight, a revised list reflecting payments not received as of August first will be submitted as the official first list of special assessments to the county on August twelfth, and our final list of payments, reflecting payments not received as of August twenty-first, will be submitted as the final corrected list of special assessments to the county on August thirtieth. If there are no protests further to consider, staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing to hear appeals of delinquent fees that are proposed for adoption and assessment on the tax rolls of the county tax assessor, adopting a report of delinquent refuse sewer and non-owner occupied rental property program fees, and directing that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as an assessment upon property within, within the City of Grand Terrace. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mark Aragon from the, representing BRTech is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nagasaki. We'll open the public hearing, and we'll ask if there's any written communication.
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, I'll bring it to council for their questions at this time. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you for that report, Mr. Nagasaki. Are these, in the attachments that are shown in here, are these all residential properties, or are there some commercial or non-residential properties also included, included in the delinquent report?
So, in your, in your, in the packet, you'll actually see two lists. The first list has a breakdown of your residential refuse and sewer. Below on that first attachment, there's a section at, towards the bottom, where it lists the commercial sewer accounts, delinquent sewer accounts. And then, in the second attachment, we have the rental inspection fee breakdown.
So, I'm looking at Exhibit A, the non-owner occupied rental property program delinquent And that's, is that, that?
Packet page one ninety-eight?
Yeah. Yeah, one ninety-eight. And those, do those include non-residential? That list right there on packet page one ninety-eight?
Madam Mayor?
Director Molina?
If I may respond to Councilmember Allen's question. So, on packet page one ninety-eight are the delinquent accounts on the rental inspection program.
And so, to answer his question?
Yeah, so those are residential accounts, and the property owners have been notified of this.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions at this time? Councilmember Hussey?
On the packet page one ninety-eight, the one all the way down inside eleven, seven fifty Mount Vernon, they'll ten thousand forty-seven dollars. That's a pretty big rental.
Yes, Councilmember Hussey, that is the Highland Apartments, and so, they have, I think, almost six hundred units, and so, it is quite a large amount.
Okay, they've been contacted, then?
Yes, yes, all these, all these account holders were contacted with the assessment hearing tonight.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? All right. Seeing no more questions, we will ask if the applicant has any comments, so that would be at this time, BRTech. Mr. Aragon, do you have?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Before I address the council on this item, I would like to, once again, comment and apologize. The last time I was here, it was for a rate-setting date, and I had a personal emergency, and I had to leave. I felt terrible having to leave, and I apologize for that. Obviously, I will be at the next rate review, God willing. And, and again, I did want to express my apologies to the council. With regard to the liens tonight, they're pretty straightforward, understandably due to our mandatory service program. I have no questions, but I'm here to answer any questions if the council has of me.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, then we don't need applicant rebuttal. So, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for their deliberations. Councilmember Hussey?
Hi, Mayor. I move to approve item eight, one, two, three, and four.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Do we need to read these titles?
I could give brief summaries. Item one does not need an action, because we already conducted the public hearing. So, the item two is the resolution establishing the delinquent refuse and sewer fees, and directing that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as an assessment on the subject properties. Item three is adopting a resolution where we're adopting a report of delinquent non-owner occupied rental property program fees and fines, and be directing, directing the staff that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as an assessment lien on the property, the subject properties. And then, item four is an approval with the county auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector for collection of special taxes, fees, and assessments for fiscal year 2019-2020, and authorizing the city manager to execute that agreement.
Thank you. City Attorney Gura, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes. And I beg your pardon, Madam Mayor, should we also include as amended or as revised?
There was a change to?
The list.
To the list? Has that list been presented to the council?
In the PowerPoint.
Okay, so... Okay. So, if the maker of the motion and the seconder will note and approve an amendment to their motion indicating that the revised list be included in that action.
I make a motion to include the revised list.
So, second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 9. This is our second public hearing. This is the 2019-2020 Landscape and Lighting Assessment District 89-1, public hearing and adoption of a resolution ordering the levy and collection of assessments. Public Works Director, Alan French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, good evening, council. Mayor Protem. Alan French, Public Works Director, presents this item for conducting a public hearing and adopting a resolution to assess property tax, on the property tax bill for the landscaping, lighting, maintenance fees. This staff report supports goal number one, ensuring fiscal viability by collecting, recovering support for services. Back in 1989, the city required developers to create an assessment district for maintaining landscaping and lighting facilities for the developments. There have been five annexations covering seven different tracts throughout the years since 1989. These are the first two zones within the city. And there's the next two zones, so there's, and the last two. Each of the seven zones are consistent with the track boundaries of each of the developments that occurred over the years. This time, staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing and we have the engineer's report as part of the packet and that was prepared by Will Dan and Associates. Their representative, Bob Quaid, is here to answer any questions and I'm here to answer questions should the council have them at this time.
Thank you, Director French. We will open the public hearing. We'll ask if there's any written communication.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Council have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Mr. French, I have a question on the fiscal impact. Engineer's report estimated fiscal impact be $47,633 and change to maintain the assessment district. For some reason, there's a shortfall in the zones in the amount of 44,1340, which would be an impact on the general fund. Why would it be an impact on the general fund? Why wouldn't we just amend the budget and pop it up so it's got a fair distribution of the cost?
Yes, Mayor Protem. The first zones that were created early, in the early years, did not include a rider to increase the assessment in the future years. So, that assessment that was set on those zones was a standard amount, set amount, unable to be increased. And I could ask...
Mr. City Attorney?
Will Dan. I was gonna say...
Well, I'm gonna ask Mr. City Attorney. Is it true that if we wanted to increase the amount in these zones, it would be subject to a 218 hearing?
Yes.
And I believe that we did that a couple of years ago. Doesn't mean we can't do it again in the future, but, Director French?
Yes. The 218 would essentially ask the residents to increase the tax assessment on them to cover those costs.
On themselves?
Yes, sir.
Hmm. This sounds like something similar to the fire department thing where, I mean, I realize the idea is, you know, try to get it as close as you can, but there should be, I'm assuming then the future annexation areas have that clause for an escalation.
Yes, sir. Zone 3 on has a clause to increase up to 2%.
Now, we don't have anything in those agreements that say something to the effect that these numbers are liquid? Because doing it off an engineer's estimate is always a faulty situation to begin with.
Well, sir, that's, that's the way the proposition's written, that you use the, and actually, we're using the prior year's...
Yeah.
...amounts to assess for this year.
Okay. I'd just like to take a second look at it. I don't want to spend money out of the general fund when it's really specific to these items.
I see. Okay.
Thanks.
Any further questions? All right. Seeing no more questions, we will move to public comment on this item. Are there requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, no need for rebuttal, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for their deliberation. Councilmember Allen?
So, I'd like to ask Mayor Protem Wilson, regarding your, the issue you brought up, are you suggesting that, that we raise the assessment, but we have to do a hearing on that and before, and that's the only possible way we can raise that, right?
Mr. City Attorney?
Correct. We'd have to do notice and hearing before taking that action for any new or increased assessment.
And if I understand the procedure correctly, then everybody would have to be here to decide whether or not they object to raising it? Or is it a situation where it automatically doesn't get raised unless somebody supports it?
Mr. City Attorney?
We'd have to receive some objections and my understanding, we haven't received anything. Chances are, if we do the notice again, we probably won't, but who knows?
Mr. City Attorney, it's my recollection that we did have a hearing to increase in two of the districts. And one of them encompasses the Highlands. That one did not have a protest and that one was increased. The other one, actually, they successfully protested the increase.
Yeah. That's interesting.
It doesn't very, doesn't happen very often.
I would agree.
But it was a small group that went around and made sure their neighbors knew that this was going on and had them express their opinion. Mr. City, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. And the council really has two options on this particular issue. As annually, the cost is assessed through the, through the report that's completed. The council can only provide services for what the revenue that comes in. The other option is, as you guys are talking about, is that you do a 218 notice again. And unlike some of the other 218 notices where it's not, you know, 50% plus one, it's the number of people that vote. So, if you, and it's really difficult because 218 wasn't designed for, for small areas. It was designed for large areas and then you have to have 50% plus one to stop, to stop the rate increase. But in this particular case, if you have 10 people and eight of them don't vote and two vote no, then it's, it's not going to increase. So, we did try it. We can try it again. We were actually successful for one of them and it was one, one big parcel, one vote, and they voted yes for the, for the increase in the assessment.
Don't we have one other, I'm sorry, this is Doug Wilson.
Mayor Protem?
Don't we have one other option where, considering this is set up on a engineer's estimate, it doesn't mean it's a hard number? So, that means that we could technically hold the line on the budget.
And...
Not spend more, not spend more than the amount of money that's on, you know, budgeted for.
We have somebody from Will Dan who wishes to speak at this time?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bob Quaid. I'm Principal Consultant for Will Dan Financial Services. We prepared the engineer's report. And to answer your question, Councilmember Wilson, the budgets that we have for, for these particular zones are received from the, from the city Public Works Department. They're asked to provide us with the actual costs of administering and providing these services. And we, we always recommend that the city put the actual costs in these reports and to reflect how much is actually being funded by the general fund, because it also gives the public an opportunity to see how much the city is actually paying for their services. And when it comes time to do a potential Prop 218 vote, there is some background and a history of the amount of general fund contributions to these districts that helps support a possible increase. And you can increase these, these districts through a Prop 218 ballot. It's a negative, it's a protest ballot, which as City Manager Duffy mentioned, if there are, whoever, whoever sends in their ballots, those are counted. And if 51% plus one votes no, it doesn't pass. So, it's just a matter of, if you could get all of the members, all of the property owners, there's not a lot of them in each of these zones to respond, have a public outreach, maybe get them to understand that to have these kinds of landscape and lighting benefits, it would behoove them to have some kind of an increase, maybe even just an escalator so that the city can keep, keep up with the costs of CPI. We would recommend something like that.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think that sounds like a good idea. We either hold the line on the budget or else we, you know, establish a way of being able to do that. It seems to me that it would be a small chance, especially if it's a protest vote, that they're gonna, you know, somebody, everybody's gonna show up and 51% are gonna say no.
Mr. Duffy?
Well, unlike the, the normal protest, protest vote, where, as we just talked about a second ago, on the, the normal Prop 218, for example, for the rate increase that we're talking about on August 13th. So, there'll be a requirement for 50% plus one of the 4,000, 5,000 customers that we have to protest against that. In this particular case, it, we only count those that vote. So, if, and this is what we did the last time, the last time we did this a couple of years ago, we had, I think, only half of the people voted, but the majority of those voted no. And so, certainly, if, we, we'll come back again next year and we can certainly bring forward the cost and do a Prop 218 notice and do an education component to try and get that rate, because ultimately, as the report says, the general fund is subsidizing services that are going directly to benefiting a certain neighborhood.
No. I didn't, just...
Councilmember Robles?
So, Prop 218 was you had to, before you imposed a fee, you had to justify the cost. So, our costs are actually greater. So, what is our recourse then? So, our recourse is we turn off the lights a couple of days at the end of the fiscal year, we stop mowing. I mean, I mean, it doesn't sound like we have any other recourse.
That would be it. You would, you would exhaust your resources and once you, once you exceeded the revenue, you just, you just stop. You stop providing the services. And you would do a 218 and you would notify the residents and say, "Look, this is what our cost is and we can only provide service for, you know, nine months. But then after that, we're going to discontinue the service unless we get, you know, an escalator." And I think that would be a good way to go, to get an escalator so you could, you could catch up over time.
Councilmember Allen?
So, this, can this district, the reason that there is no escalating price or increase is because that's, it was not written into it originally? Is that the, is that the...
Mr. Duffy?
The situation, right?
That is correct.
It was just neglected?
Well, I don't know if it was neglected, that at, at the time, it was, when it was originally brought, put together. And so, when I came on board in 2015, every single annexation that we did into the district had that escalator put into it.
Except for...
The original.
Yeah. So, can, can districts be, for lack of a better word, dissolved and then...
Can we annex the others into the existing districts? Mr. City Attorney?
Make them one district, you know, I'm saying...
Dissolve them and then annex them?
No, annex one of the existing into some of the other...
It runs out of money and it goes away.
Off the hand, I'd have to take a look.
Then when we rewrite the new rules on the new district, we put in...
Okay. So, we have, we have one, one item before us, though. So, what would you like to do with this item that we have tonight?
So, Mayor, I'll move that we conduct a public, or that, I'll move the recommendation to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, approving the engineer's annual levy report for and confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the City of Grand Terrace Landscating and Street Lighting District 89-1 for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Is there an opportunity to modify that? To say we spend only, only the money that we have in the assessment district? Mr. City Attorney? Or do we have to do the resolution how it's written?
I would recommend including a direction written, express direction, in the resolution if that is the direction of the council.
Okay. All right. So, I have a motion to, for staff recommendation? And I'll make an alternate motion that we start with staff recommendation, but we only spend up to the amount that we have in the lighting and landscaping district.
I'll second Darcy. The mayor's motion?
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, you wanna just use the, the engineer's report, the fiscal impact's $47,633,18, and the shortfall, that we won't cover that, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We will just, we will just provide service until we no longer have money in the district or in the lighting and landscaping district.
That's fine. I'll withdraw mine, because I would support that.
So, I have a motion to adopt a resolution only up to the amount that we have in the lighting and landscaping district. And I have it seconded by Councilmember Robles.
Madam Mayor, before we vote, I understand a person from Will Dan wanted to provide some last information, apologized, but wanted to make sure the council has all the information that they have.
Mr. City Attorney, thank you. Please state your case.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The engineer's report, as it stands right now, is reflecting the full budget. You're not really obligated to spend all of that money. You can still collect whatever is approved as the assessments and spend up to that dollar amount. You can, if you need to, you know, cut back services to maybe instead of a weekly service, cut back to a monthly or a bi-weekly or something to try to bring the cost down. And then those kinds, those costs can be reviewed next year and maybe even that, when we do the budget for next year, we can reflect these new costs and show that the general fund is not being burdened by these general benefit contributions. And actually, you'll save money by cutting the services even, you can even do that for this fiscal year.
Okay. So, you're saying you will work with our Public Works Department to, to address the amount that we have in the lighting and landscaping district assessment and no, no amount over that? You will work with them to, to decide what services to provide? Is that, is that the point that you're making at this point?
That's, no, that, that's not, I'm just saying that we don't need to modify the engineer's report.
Oh, I wasn't asking to modify the engineer's report. All I, my motion says we will move forward and we will spend only what's being assessed. That, that's, that's all I'm saying. We will provide services only up to what we can cover.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, or Mr. City Manager?
I'm sorry, Mayor. And what I would like, if possible, that if you would ask staff to come back with sort of what, what that estimate would be, because I think you, what, what I, what I want to make sure of, that the council's aware that at some point in time, we are going to stop services. And I want to be, you to give you a chance to be able to say, "Okay, it's six months, nine months out and we will notify the residents. We'll, we'll send a notice out saying that particular case." But, but if you, if you, I can just take that direction and move forward or you can, you can provide that as part of your, part of your motion.
So, amended. Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes. And we have the option, of course, to revise the scope of work and in, for example, winter month... example, winter months and so on, to revise the scope of work and for some of the coverage is not quite as thick as what it is now. That, I don't see it as a good remedy so far as, well, we'll go ahead until we run out of steam. That's a bad idea. I think we need to be proactive.
I'll second the amended motion.
All right. So you have your direction to come back to us. Mr. City Attorney?
And one last point, that the motion include direction to the city attorney and city manager to revise the resolution to include the mayor's motion, amended motion.
All right.
Thank you.
I will take that second modification as well.
A second modification to original motion?
Okay, so just to recap, we have our resolution, but it has been, the motion is to amend it to spend only what is in the assessed amount. Staff will come back to us with a plan for how that will change the way that we provide service throughout the year, and City Attorney will amend the resolution to reflect that. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business, which is the adoption of a resolution to apply for grant funds from the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of Grants, and Local Assistance statewide park development and community revitalization program for Grand Terrace Middle School Pool Refurbishment Project. Director Molina?
Just thanking Madam Mayor. For the record, my name is Sandra Molina. I'm Planning and Development Services Director, and I'm presenting this item this evening. This item promotes our 2030 Vision Statement with regard to goal number four, to develop and implement successful partnerships. This item today is, the state of California let out a notice of funding availability a few months back with regard to Prop 68 funding. And so this money can be used, excuse me, the grant application eligible projects include creation of a new park, expanding an existing park, renovating an existing park. There is, there are several million dollars of available funds. No match is required to apply for the grant. And so what the staff is proposing to do is to apply for a grant, to application, to renovate or reconstruct the Grand Terrace Middle School pool. As you know, the city is limited in recreational space, and for us to be able to construct a new park, construct a new pool, would mean that we would have to displace some other type of recreational amenity that's currently in place. And so the grant guidelines do allow the city to apply for an application on property owned by another agency, and if so awarded, to use those funds on that other property. So the city does have joint use agreements with the Colton Joint Unified School District. Last year, the City Council did approve a license agreement with the school district for joint use of the soccer fields and the pool. However, the pool wasn't at that time able to be refurbished due to repair exceed of what was anticipated. So the city is required under the grant application to hold five community workshops, which we've done. We completed them just last week. And so some of the improvements that we got input on is to include shade structures, a projection screen for movies, a splash pad, a walk-in beach feature where it's a slow or gradual sloping towards the deeper end, ADA improvements and access to the lockers. And activities included open swim or swim lessons, competitive swim, the dive-in movie, and water aerobics. And one of the workshops we did have at the senior center, and the seniors were really interested in the water aerobics as far as an activity. So part of the grant application is that the city submit a resolution adopted by the City Council authorizing city staff to apply for the grant application. If we are successful in our application, we would come back to the City Council authorizing to accept that grant. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any comments.
Thank you, Director Molina. We have questions for staff at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to council for deliberations and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, I make, excuse me, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution, the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace approving the submission of the application for statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds for the Grand Terrace Middle School Pool Refurbishment Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We have no request for future agenda items, so we will move to city manager communications.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I had been practicing all week to be able to do this, but I have a horse sore throat, so I won't be able to sing this. Just going to be announcing that the next movie in the park is going to be The Sound of Music. I had been rehearsing all week to be able to sing that opening line, but it's going to be July 20th at Veterans Freedom Park. And so it should be a really good event, and we've had really good attendance over the last couple of times. And so after this one, just giving you your preview, there will be, Elvis will be next after this particular event. So we're very excited about Elvis coming down after The Sound of Music. But that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have no closed session tonight, so we will adjourn in memory of Peter, Pete Parsons. The next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 23rd at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.